Today's date, Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. To my left, I have a board member, Mr. Himmel, Mr. Franco, Ms. Barry, Mr. O'Brien, our clerk, um, sorry, Kathy.
Kathleen.
Kathleen Griffin, sorry, look, drawn a blank, and our Director of Inspection Services, Mr. Conlin. I'd ask everybody with a cellphone to please turn it on mute for the, um, please turn your ringer on mute for the remainder, and if I can have a, a motion to accept and waive the reading of the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting from September 24th, 2024.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, first order of business, Old Business ZB824, Daniel Reganini, for a variance to erect a small patio to accommodate a 10 by 16-foot shed on premises numbered 19 Agawam Road, Quincy, and make a motion to move that to October 22nd, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Old Business ZB824, Cody Chi, for a variance and a finding to construct and attach a third unit to an existing two-family home on the premise numbered 59 Old Colony Ave, Quincy, and make a motion to move that to 102224.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. So if you're here to, for either of those cases, they'll be heard on, at our next meeting on October 22nd, due to, I should have mentioned, our chair is, is out ill tonight, so, uh, that's why he would like, we were moving those accounts, uh, cases, accounts, sorry, I think I'm in my day job. Um, case ZB82366, 108 Albatross Road, they requested a six-month extension. Could I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else on that one, Mr.?
No, sir.
Okay, perfect. So new b- new business.
Swear.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Uh, we need to, if you're gonna, um...
You're gonna testify?
You're gonna testify.
Tonight, we stand, raise your right hand. Lawyers, you don't have to.
Anybody who's gonna speak tonight, please raise your right hand.
Do you swear this is testimony that you will give in the matter at hand will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. New business, ZB824-58, Joan McGlaughlin and John Lehman for a variance and special permit, FPOD, to increase the single, current single-family home by one and a half stories and renovate the front and back porches at a rear addition and make the structure flood compliant, compliant on the premise numbered 144, 145 Dorchester Street. Quincy is the applicant here.
Yes.
Floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brian Donahue, uh, from Donahue Athletics here in Quincy. Uh, this evening, I'm representing, uh, John Lehman and Joan McGlaughlin, the owners of 145 Dorchester Street. Um, the, the site is located at the end of Dorchester Street on the way towards Moon Island with, uh, a proximity to Nickerson Beach, so Dorchester Ave borders, uh, the, uh, the roadway, uh, to the beach. So what, what the applicant would like to do would be to raise the home down to the foundation and rebuild and expand it slightly to accommodate a new and modern home. Um, the plans that you have in front of you depict what we are hoping to do. Um, they've already been through the Conservation Commission process with an approval, so this is obviously the next step because we are seeking relief on setbacks. The building on the sides, the lot itself is, uh...
Fifty-five hundred square feet plus or minus. The drawing on the left shows the existing footprint, drawing on the right shows a proposed new footprint. Um, so it's a 5,500-square-foot lot, uh, single-family, Cape, very small, about 1,500 square feet at the most of existing living space, plus an attached garage. The house is six and a half feet on the right of property line and 10 and a half feet on the left. It does respect the, the front property line at 25 feet in the front and the 20 feet in the back of Residence A, which this is obviously in.
Um, obviously, the house is, is, is small in size and they would, they would hope to, um, there's still a possibility that John, uh, and Joan would be living in this house, that's hasn't been decided yet, but they definitely want to go through the renovation. John is a builder himself, he's done a lot of work in the neighborhood and, uh, and around the, uh, Boston area, so he's a competent builder, I've worked with him before, and he's, uh, uh, he and his wife, Joan, are proposing this renovation. Um, so what we, the initial thrust would be to bring the building down to the, to the cell of the existing foundation because we have to raise it up a foot for the living space. We can fill in the foundation, um, of the main box, which is here. Bring it right up to the existing grade, put in the flow-through panels because this is, isn't an AE zone, um, and then build up from that. So that's the plan in terms of the, the actual size. So we, we are seeking, uh, front yard relief and eight inches of rear relief, or five feet into the 25-foot center. Um, this is a rendering of the front of the house, um, the locust plans basically show the location, and once again, I should say, um, as a former squonomite myself, is that along this road, there's a very inconsistent, um, setback of the existing homes that are there. Some are on the property line, some are back 10 feet, some are back 20 feet. So we think by impinging on that just five feet with the expansion towards the front, um, that we're not doing anything out of the ordinary for the character of the roadway. This architectural design plan shows how the new house will sit on the lot, a single-car garage with paving, uh, permeable pavers on the front, so there's plenty of room for at least three more vehicles. Uh, we're creating a new vestibule in the front and a new porch because the living areas in the master bedroom face the ocean and we wanted a maximum view. The small addition on the back is that there's a mudroom and entryway, um, with a half path, open plan, kitchen, living, dining, up to a second floor. Four and, uh, pretty straightforward, this house is approximately 3,300 square feet of living space, which is more than norm, you know, 1,400, 1,500, you get condos for that size these days. So this, this particular house, again, as, as I mentioned, a single-car garage, um, open kitchen, living, dining, second floor is three bedrooms and an office, screen and porch, two baths, and then a finished dining for the, for the full bath up in the attic, up as well for potentially a game room or, or a bunk room. These, uh, elevations, I think, are too advanced, so we refer to the renderings to show for, um, what the design, um, is looking like. It's a fairly straightforward gable roof, um, kind of a, uh, beachy vibe to it, we're gonna be using baton siding and, and shingles. Um, it's two and a half stories to meet the zoning, um, the, the top floor is dormered, so we can get a little bit of light in that space up top. Um, again, um, the main box is here, and we're bumping it a little bit, five feet out from the front, and adding these two porches for, um, for outdoor living space facing the ocean. Also, there's a small deck in the back, um, facing the backyard. Um, you know, it's, again, it's very traditional materials, double-hung windows, um, under the, under the requirement for building height for this zone as well, even with the elevated first floor, we're under 35 feet. So, um, that's kind of it in a nutshell. I think, uh, Mr. Lehman, would you like to say a few words, if that's okay, the, uh, the applicant?
Yeah. Mr. Lehman, did you get sworn in?
I did.
Yeah, okay.
I raised my hand.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, thank you for having us. Uh, just wanted to say that Joan grew up in this neighborhood, I've done a lot of work here, I only want to do what's right for the neighborhood. I know, uh, most of the people there, and because of the shape of this lot and the fact that we wanted to use the exist, much of the existing building as we could, there's no other way to get, get us the square footage that we need to live there. So, um, I think it's pretty straightforward, the plan, I think Brian did a good job. I know we have some of the neighbors here that want to speak, so, thank you.
Certainly have the opportunity. Any questions for, let's see, Mr. Himmel, you got any questions?
No questions.
Go, Barry.
Not yet.
All right, well, first, uh, call those in favor. If you are in favor of the project or want to speak, please step forward. Just name an address for the record, please.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having me. Uh, Gary Kirk, 27 Shoreham Street, a little bit six houses up from where the proposed building is, uh, can't speak highly about Joan and John. I've known him in a personal capacity and a professional capacity, having built our home. Uh, professionals in every sense of the word. Many homes in the street that he's built, and as he has stated, he's here to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Hope you...
Thanks. Anyone else want to speak in favor?
Brian Semerall, 15 Shoreham Street, uh, also know John and Joan, uh, for a long time, uh, they built my house, live about three houses up from proposed property, uh, always done the right thing for the neighborhood, certainly support what they want to do.
Thanks, Brian.
Hi, Kelly Gilson, 28 Shoreham Street, um, the projected home I view right down to, and, um, John and Joan, they have built many houses on my street, including my own. They do an exceptional job, they're always in taking consideration, neighbors, what they're doing. I have absolutely no objection. My mother is here today, she's a direct abbot. It's a great home for the neighborhood and the way they're doing it, and so I'm very much in favor of this, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Sorry.
Good evening, my name is Tish Fernandez, and I am in a butter right behind the property, and again...
Just your address, Tish, please.
10 Shoreham.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, and again, I can, I have absolutely no problem, I've seen the work that they do, um, as I've said, they're very conscientious, they're very, they're part of the neighborhood, and I believe that one of them still owns some property right there. They always do great work as well as being very, very respectful to the flavor of the neighborhood and the neighbors themselves.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are you the house, or spend a lifetime touring?
Not, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so your backyards are checked?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
How you doing? Paul Joyce, 14 Shoreham, so I'm the second house.
Okay.
Uh, technically the third because the corner house is Dorchester.
Yes.
But I'm, I'm 14, and I already can't see over the, the current house, so, and, um, my view, I can see the water from my back deck, and I know, I've seen the plans, it's not, they're not expanding from side to side, so I have no objection at all. Uh, John did an addition on our house 15 years ago, and couldn't be more happy with it, so I have no exceptions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in favor? First call, second call, call that part of the hearing closed? Any plans or... No, from, uh, the engineering department, September 19th, 2024, we reviewed this middle for the above-referenced project and have the following comments: On completion of the project as-built plan showing all utilities, building footprints, reference, bounds to be submitted along with the digital file, as pre-built plan shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer, an elevation search should, search should also be submitted if the property is in the flood zone. Opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call, do you want to speak, Mr. Coleman?
Hi, uh, my name's Chris Coleman, I, uh, 141 Dorchester Street, right next to, uh, the home John and Joan want to build, and, uh, gonna build. Um, I couldn't agree with it better with everything everybody just said. The problem is, we're only looking for conformity. When you look up the street, all the, uh, porches or front steps are all in a line. It's about conformity, this is a zoning board meeting, right? John builds excellent stuff, everything everybody said tonight is true. We just want conformity, keeping the, the line going. I built the house at 131 Dorchester Street, an excellent house built by John. Um, we just want to make sure the houses stay in a line, in a row, you know, and I thought that's what zoning was for, yeah? To just keep, if you go up Shoreham Street, everything's in a line, if you go along Dorchester Street, everything's in a line. That's, we just don't want the middle house sticking out like that, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Anyone else opposed or undecided?
Hi, my name is Winfam, and I'm at 131 Dorchester Street. I actually live in a house that John built, beautiful. Uh, I'm here just to voice my thought that, um, we rather want to be in the neighborhood, we'd rather want to see, preserving the consistency, the conformity of the existing condition. Right now, every house, if you take a laser beam, you fly it out from left to right to the end of the block, you will see everything on that same line. As Chris pointed out, this is the situation that we're gonna run into.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Mark Dujin. Uh, I live on 151 Dorchester Street, next to, uh, to the house John got to build. So, uh, like Chris and, uh, Win, they already say exactly the way I want to say it, so a reason is, you know, my house did, um, built by John, but just outside, 151. The inside, we have somebody else to finish, not by John. So, anyway, John is a professional, he is a nice guy, he, he a builder, but the way he got up, I look at the plan, the way he got to build that, I don't, I'm not agreed. So, because from his house to my house, you know, net each other, sooner, if I, if he, he put a house all the way up and go forward to the, uh, street five, six feet, the time the stair done, probably the light, eight or nine feet left from the sidewalk. So, anyway, when I, on my house, second floor or fourth floor, I could not, I lose my view, and if I step out in front of, on the house, and if I step right in front of the house, I only see, like, his house, nothing else. Cannot see my window bag because it's so big, so high, you know, and, uh, it's too close to my house either. That's why I not read.
Do you know what your...
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you know what your front setback is? You built that house after him.
From the step?
From your front steps.
The front step, did, uh, Anne, I bought the house from Anne.
No, 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 I know, but you rebuilt the whole house. What's your, what's your front setback, do you know? To the steps from your, from the...
I, I'm not even, uh, no, I'm not even, no, because...
I mean, I'm, I'm pulling up your plans now.
The pow, the powdering, I mean, the, uh, the landing, the landing for the stair, the, I, they have the big hills, you know, like, uh, concrete slab. I actually ran the machine, I, I jack that myself, I jack it up myself, that John built that time, I jack it up, I dig everything up, and I actually moved the stair on the side. That's where less to go to the street. I put the stair on side, both side, uh, I mean, one side, it not toward to the front. And I actually don't know, you know, how big the concrete is and how much less whatever there, but I actually go back and I just go up there and ask the, um, the, uh, the, the city... For me to go make the house where it not start, the city said no, and that's where, you know, I live the way it is. And that, that's where, you know, I don't know how many feet left or whatever there, so, but I build right on the foundation, assistant of powdering, it not go forward at all, not go to forward, only the landing.
We measure, we measure from the landing, like, that's, that's, that's how we measure in the city. Like, if you were, you have a front porch and the, the front in your house, and by city definition, that's part of your building, when you, when any type of, as soon as you go up, that's where you have to have conformity, you're, and, and yours is, sticks out further than, than that house would in the end.
Well, stick out, that, when I do that, actually, I'll do that, and city, and then, um, and then Bruce...
When you have any type of awning in your...
Bruce.
That, that's considered part of your building, so that's, that's part of your front entrance, so if you, if you've come out past, yeah, it's, yeah, it's covered.
Bruce, when I, when I go, when I, when I break the concrete and I, I put the, uh, the, uh, the lock hole...
Yeah, yeah.
For, 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 for decoration.
From me, I, I've seen...
Excuse me, for decoration, and I put that up, and actually Bruce, he come over, he asked me, okay, you have a plan? I said, no, I don't have a plan. He said, you know what it look like when you done?
Yeah.
I say, I can draw you a little bit, get idea, and then he told me to draw it, and I go, I draw that, I bring to the...
To the building department.
The building department, go to engineering...
Yeah.
Room, and with Chris, he, we can go together, and in the room, say, that's not structural, and I can, I can live like that, because no structure, on, only the, the front porch, not upstairs.
I'm, I'm not having...
Not upstairs.
No, I'm just saying, that's not, when, when, any type of, from your property, anytime you have any landing, any steps, those are part of your, what we would call your existing building, so it's, 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 they're there, yours is already built.
I...
Yeah.
I actually not gotta go any forward, I did do whatever, I bought the house from, and the, and in the landing right there, only thing different, only thing different than the landing, I put two pole, two, three pole, and put a rail to make it look, that's only thing I do different.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I do different, to put a pole, one pole, two pole, three pole, and I get a lock from the water.
I get it.
I ring the water, I put it up, everything out, and then everybody kind of say something, and then Bruce coming down, and he asked me to go up there, and I did the next day, and then I bring the plan, go to the engineering room, and the engineering room say, okay, because no structure, because if nothing's a port on top, I can take two pole out anytime, it is gone. It's gone.
Yeah, no, I understand, I, you know, I mean, the plans, I, I...
If, if they don't let me, if I, if that's fine, if I go up there, they say no, I still take it down.
Yeah, no, that, that's, yeah.
I still take it down, because, because I...
Yeah, we're not talking about... Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, because I, I live here, I live here, I follow the rule.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering if you knew what your setback was, I just, that's all I was asking.
No, and, I mean, you know, on that side, if, if everybody say, no, you cannot do that, I really happy to take it out, no problem at all.
I mean, technically, you know, it, it was a different time, a different leadership, you know, but the, technically, you need a variance when you're, when you're extending past that 25 feet, so, um, but that's, it's neither here nor there. Um, anything else you want to say on, on, on their property, not on yours?
Say again, please.
Anything else about, about the, the proposed property? Anything else you want to add?
Uh, for him to build?
Correct, yeah.
He professional, he do whatever he want.
Yeah.
But...
It's about you, yeah.
Yeah, we just don't want anything look different...
Yeah.
Than everyone else, that's all.
Yeah.
He have more land, he can go on the back, he can go on the side, he can do whatever he want.
Also do you?
No.
There's not much room there.
I, I, I'm not, yeah, because I bought the house from Anne, that's the way it is.
Yeah.
And I, I build everything up, the powdering, we get the sample.
We're not worried about your house.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else opposed or undecided?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that in a second, don't worry, thank you. Anyone else? First call, second call, third call.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, sir.
I'm being a little old.
No, it's all right, take your time, my friend.
Sir, were you here when I swore everybody in?
I made your part.
Were you here when I swore everybody in?
No.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear the testimony you gave in the matter at hand will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Reed, I live at number 161 Dorchester Street. Been there a while. Uh, these, uh, John and, uh, his lady are, uh, are good neighbors, good people, have an excellent reputation as builders, so, uh, uh, there is no qualm with the, uh, character of the people. The only worry is the conformity with the setback of the various houses, there are five along the street, and if we can keep it, uh, uh, similar, we're going to be fine, but if we go over the existing, uh, setback, that's where the problem is. Now, uh, I'm unsure as to how much the, uh, porch is going to be built up over this setback. If you have one floor and, uh, canopy, uh, that's a porch, but if you put anything over that, that's a projection. So, it's, uh, with trepidation that we look at this, we don't, uh, we aren't sure how this is going to turn out, and this is why we have to bring attention. So, this is the gist of, uh, uh, my neighbor, Mark, and, uh, and the next-door neighbor to the, uh, uh, proposed property, uh, Chris, and we're just trying to keep a, a sense of uniformity along the road.
Thank you.
I paused because you seem to have some...
No, we were just looking at the, I think we're all just looking at the plans.
Okey-dokey.
You speak as to what you're talking about, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call, I think I heard a call, first call, second call, third call closed, so that part of the hearing closed? Questions, complaints, do you want to address any of those, Brian? Mr. Lehman? Yeah.
If I can show you a couple of pictures, first of all, I don't, you know, Mark's a good guy, I built this house, I understand what he's saying.
Sure.
Because of the shape of this lot, there's no way to do what he wants to do, to push it back, we cannot do it. So, I brought pictures of his house. He has a nine-foot...
Yeah, I'm familiar with, I'm around the corner.
His nine-foot, yeah.
Didn't...
This is his house.
I don't know what the setback is.
And then, the house at 131 Dorchester Street, I built that also, that is literally five feet off the street.
Kind of your block, this, this block.
Joe, this is what they're talking about, this block is fairly uniform, this is all
over the place.
No, I, I, I understand, I agree, but it's, that one block is not one block. Yeah, so, I mean, I understand what they're saying, but what's fair is fair, I mean, other people have done it, I've done it for other people, so, and, um...
And you looked at...
Oscar's, Oscar's house is a nine feet, he has nine feet, that's about, we're, we're scared of, he was scared.
You looked at, you looked at trying to do, I'm sure, trying to do everything, and like, there's just no, outside of removal, right?
Well, you want as much as a house...
Foundation in that house.
So I told them that when they, when they...
So you're coming out six additional feet max, then adding the steps, right? So... From the portion of your covered area, so it's, the actual main structure is 20 feet off the street still?
Yes.
Any questions, Mr. Himmel? Any questions, Mr. Lehman?
No, 199, no question.
Mr. Fragle?
Questions?
I wonder.
Yeah. Ms. Barry?
I understand people who worry about the view, but if it ever comes based on people, no people will build anything.
Any questions?
Are you opposed to pushing it back three feet? We can go pushing it back three feet and we can do more with that.
And we're off the foundation, I think his idea that your existing house could be absorbing on, uh, take it out and put in one in. Plus, plus, because of the lot's triangle is not really square.
Yeah.
It's just impossible to do it right.
If, if I got to address that, number one, the, the, the two-story, um, deck in the front is, projects five feet, as does that cable, um, for the second floor of porch and office space. Those are totaling five feet. I mean, we could pull it back maybe two, go to three feet out and maybe that would make people a little bit happier, I, I don't know. I'd hate to ruin, I like the feel of the architecture, I'm obviously biased. Uh, I don't think it's impeding on anyone's view. Uh, everyone has a beautiful, straight-on, um, vantage point of the Boston skyline, Marina Bay. And, uh, I just, I, I'm worried about the integrity of the design, the way it is. And I, I really don't think the gentleman that was up here speaking, his, his porch projection is closer to the property line than this house will be. Um, with all due respect, I appreciate his concern, but he's closer to the street than we are going to be.
Mr. O'Brien?
I, I, I just have a, I think that structurally, there's, there's different properties.
I mean, they're, they're different, um, setbacks along the whole entire road. Uniformity, what he, what they want to do is put a building in there as opposed to a front porch or a oak. And if you go the other side of, uh, the street there, you're up almost to the edge of the property line.
You're on the sidewalk from the other side of your
I, I think, you know I understand the look for the consistency, but I don't think you'll accomplish anything right. Saving it, I don't
I think
No, you're, I
Hold on, we're, we're discussing as a board for right now. Um, I think that, look, I, it, you know, I think we probably maybe go down there, take another look. I mean, I know the neighborhood extraordinarily well, I've been there 43 years. Um, the, I, I, I understand consistency and conformity. I put neighborhoods just aren't like that anymore. Every house on that block is different. You got some pushed way back, you got some on the street, you got multifamilies there, you got, or two units. Uh, you got the adjacent houses that they, that they talked about were formerly small capes. They're no longer small capes, you know, I mean, there's, there's no conformity to the neighborhood at all. Um, and trying to preserve a lot line, I get it, I mean, or, or building line and that, yeah, we have, the zoning board exists because there is not conformity in our lots, in the city, at all. Um, we try to have some plans so that we can make arbitrary decisions based on buildings, neighborhoods, uh, because we just, we're not, we're not a, a cookie cutter community. I mean, it's not like you're building down in Florida. Like, there, there is no tract homes up here, um, so, and tract lots. So I think that's, you know, I mean, I think if we, if you, I think the board would probably do, be served well to go down there, take a look at the street from both sides, you know, take a look at the difference in buildings. Uh, because I, I don't know where you can pull this back. I mean, yeah, you could tell them to get rid of the deck and then, you know, and pull it further back, but I don't know that that accomplishes much either way.
Right there, is it possible to put a stake out there so we can see? Where, well, the existing footprint, main house is exactly 25 feet. So that's, we're talking five
It's not moving forwards six feet on the
Mr. Coleman, just one second, I'll, yeah, yeah.
Would you just, would you give us a stake out there just so we can, we can get a peek at it?
Sure.
I, I said he could come up, yeah, yeah.
Hi, I wanted to come up and say, you know, um, I built 131 with John.
Yeah.
It's one of the most nice houses out there.
I love it.
No one's questioning that.
Yeah, yeah.
But when we built 131, it was on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
It was a pre-existing, we could have built it still on the sidewalk. We didn't, by the request of the city, they said, would you consider moving it back five feet? We moved it back five feet and there is conformity on Dorchester Street, there is
Not going down, Dorchester?
There is, there is conformity on Dorchester. I hate to just
Go which way?
Going either way.
No.
And, and the only building that is out of conformity is, uh, the guy's, uh, he's like three houses in from Bellevue because he had a pre-existing home that was out close to the, uh, sidewalk. You know what? I'm not against John's building.
No, 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 I mean, look, I mean, just look, look, just come here, just look at the map right there. Tell me there's conformity on that side of Dorchester Street.
Well, wait, this is my house.
No, I'm talking this way now.
Yeah, you're sweet, well, this guy
So this, you, you might be able to say, yeah, for your five homes up here, but there's no conformity here.
Well, there's conformity here. That's the whole point of meeting, we just want
No, no, I, I get it, I get it, but then, but conformity would be, every one of these houses is a small capes though.
The guy that built the house down here, he was, uh, he was already pre-existing, he was
I'm not, I'm not, there's no argument, I mean, I think we'll, we'll come down and look at it again. But I mean, I think if we walk down here and measure it all of you.
Hey, listen, I want a nice house. It's a really pretty house.
I think, I think that if this, if, look, I, I think we, if, do, do, can we take a couple of weeks, go down, look at the lot, just let them get comfortable with what they're looking at, you know, take another peek at it again. Um, I think that probably would, would make sense at this point. Yeah, you just kind of, yeah, just give, give, give an indication as to how much it would, you know, come out for them. Um,
I mean, two things aren't going to change. The foundation area that he wants to maintain and keep, and the, and the odd size of the lot, I mean, it's
Not going to change, yeah, yeah.
So
It's either you, we decide that you can do it or you, you, you gotta scrap the foundation and figure it out.
What day?
So I can't be here the 20 seconds, can we go to the next one?
We have two, two cases in old business on the 22nd, we have none on November 12th.
Can we do November 12th?
We're coming for one case.
What's that?
You say one case on November 12th?
No, there's no old business company on
Oh, no, oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm out of town on the 22nd, so considering I heard the case, try to make it easier and let Marty come and listen to it.
12th is
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Take a motion?
ZB A dash 2458, Joe McLaughlin, John Lehman, Bavarians and Special Permit, Flood to increase the current single-family home by one and one-half stories, add renovate front and back porches, add rear addition, make structure, Flood compliant and premises numbered 145. Dorchester Street Quincy, make a motion to extend to November 12th.
Thank you.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So move. So we'll, we'll, we're going to go down, we'll make a decision after we, we see that.
Okay.
That works for you. And if you could just, you know, sometime, just, even if it's just a little chalk outline there, just so we can see, uh, appreciate that. What? I know, well, that'll be my retirement day.
Lot of head shaking there, Brian.
Case ZB A 24-59, JCBT Architect LLC for a variance finding and special permit flood to demolish the existing garage to construct a three-story rear addition with the garage on the premise numbered 130 Willow Street. Is the applicant or the representative here?
Yes.
Yes.
Council, yeah, yeah. People don't know what streets they represent. I didn't say that wrong.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, uh, my name's Jim Chan, the architect of JCBT Architect. I'm here tonight, uh, representing the homeowner of, uh, 130, um, Willow Street. Uh, for the record, our office is located 38 Villains Road in Quincy. Um, 130 Willow Street is in a residential B district, um, uh, the site is 50 by 105, uh, 50 feet by 105 deep. And, uh, it's, it's approximately 5,250 square feet of lot size. Uh, we're proposing to request for a rear addition to the existing non-conforming structure and non-conforming lot. We're proposing a three new, uh, three-story wood frame construction at the rear, uh, with a ground level parking, uh, two additional living floor above that, uh, totaling a gross square footage of, uh, of 3,290. The total proposed footprint, uh, is approximately 1,690 square feet, uh, after the addition. Um, the total living area, uh, like I said, is 3,200. Um, the existing basement will be infill, um, due to the fact that it's located in the, uh, floodplain, uh, district. Um, so we'll need to raise the, uh, the basement level above the floodplain elevation. So any living space, uh, proposed will be at least one, one foot above the, uh, floodplain elevation. So the rear addition at the ground level will be an enclosed two, um, two level, two, two space of parking. The original garage there will be demolished, um, and creating two, uh, car garage. So, and then the first floor will be, um, will have a newly relocated, um, kitchen, an open office and full bathroom. The second floor addition will have the new master bedroom plus a new, um, secondary bedroom, total, totaling two, uh, four bedrooms, um, and three full bathrooms. So the applicant is seeking for a, uh, a finding on horizontal extension on the existing non-conforming structure. Um, to, to the right side, currently we have six feet setback. So the new addition will be pushed back one foot. So at the rear addition, we'll have a seven feet setback. So it's less than the existing. So all the proposed footprint does not, do not protrude beyond the, uh, existing non-conforming setback. So in addition, we're requesting for a, uh, variance on excessive, uh, FAR. And this zone is limited to 40% uh, in res B for the multifamily. But, um, our use will stay the same as a single family, uh, in which, uh, if it was in a residential A district, will, will, there will be no limit on the FAR. So the proposed project, uh, is, will be considered a, a three, three-story at the back. Uh, the front is still a two-and-a-half story. Um, that, that portion is to remain. And the front setback is, is going to stay where it is, existing non-conformance. Um, so the rear of the property actually slopes down, uh, a bit, um, which will create an indoor garage, uh, at the lower level. Um, so this lot will, it, it, like I said, it's in the floodplain district, so it will require a special permit approval from the constable in connection. Um, we also propose to have one exterior parking, um, on the outside. So the proposal will have three total parking space where only two is required. So in the end, I do believe that this, um, proposal is consistent with the, uh, with the, uh, you know, surrounding multifamily neighborhood zones, uh, will not cause any more detrimental to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Is the re, is the basement being done because of the, because of the requirement of all the 40% as well? 50% so you gotta fill the basement. Any questions at this time?
No questions at this time.
Could you show, tell me where the third parking place is?
Yes.
See the two in the garage?
Yeah, two in the garage, so right here, or, or, or do you have the third parking space?
And the turning radius of work on those?
This turning radius into the garage. Uh, setback here is, uh, meant to be one.
Okay, so the, the second car in the garage will be able to turn out with a car parked in the back?
Yeah, when they turn here.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. I'm good.
Any other questions at this time? Didn't have a
Thank you.
All of us in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. Any comments from the engineering department? We've reviewed the submitted to the above-referenced projects and our comments are as follows. Especially how much impervious area will be increased due to the development. Provide plan showing the layout of utility and grading. Whether there will be any fill or change of grade due to the development, compensatory storage may be required to fill as proposed as part of the, on the property. Upon completion of the project as the plan showing all utilities and building footprints can be submitted along with a digital file. An elevation search should be submitted if the property is in the flood zone. Opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call?
Got one here.
Second call?
Close.
Yep.
My name is Jim Edwards and I reside at 130 Philip Street, 1 St. O from Willow. I've lived there for over 50 years now. Uh, this is, this building is in a flood zone, so has the, I'm not sure on special permit issues, what comes first, kind of the chicken or the egg kind of thing, but has this proposal been submitted to CONCON? Have they reviewed it?
That's unacceptable.
What's that?
Oh, yeah, that's unacceptable.
Next step, so any approvals or disapprovals, what it would be contingent upon?
Correct.
Because 50%, if the bill, cost of the building upgrades is in, in excess of 50% of the value of the building, 100% of the building has to be above the 100-year elevated floodplain elevation.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, Mr. Con.
Yeah. Okay. So that's one thing, um, and I do see under 3.4, 5, non-conforming single and two-family residential structures that horizontal extensions are, they may be authorized. But my feeling about this building is that you're six or seven feet from your neighboring, from your neighbor next door. And you're doubling the length of this building along the blot line and you're just going to overpower both the residents on either side. I think it's, um,
You're referring to extending the prior existing non-conformance along that line?
That's right, but that's, yeah, right, but now we're doubling the, the length of the building. And the existing building had some, the existing house had, you, we're filling it in the front too. And the buil, the building that's there, the house that's there has some nice architectural features, not great, but it's a neighborhood building, we heard a lot of talk about that a few minutes ago, about the character of the neighborhoods and how it gets nibbled away at and, and it, it degenerates over years for lack of a better word, but anyway, um, between the fact that the building will be, um, re, what, by filling in the front and extending out the back and all the architectural features on that existing house are now gone. We've created a 70-something foot by 24-foot boxcar. That's what it is. And the architectural features are nonexistent. The front of the building, which has some character right now, is it's gone and the, the front of the building really, to me, is kind of an insult to the, you know, I mean, yeah, sometimes as architects we have to do what we have to do, but it's kind of an insult to the streetscape. And I think considering the scale of the addition, the architectural I don't want to say that word, but, um, I think that this project has some problems and it's a kind of a bad addition to the neighborhood. And I hope the zoning would, uh, refuses to approve it. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call, third call closed. Um, it's, it's remaining a single family for now, is that correct? So you're not adding any exterior egress or anything like that for the second story?
No.
Okay.
There will be a, uh, rear egress on the first floor.
Family expanding, is that kind of the reasoning?
That, that is correct, and the family is here tonight.
Okay. Any questions, it's a massive house.
So we've got a 5,200 square foot lot with a proposed 3,200 square foot building, is that correct?
That's right. The original lot size is, yeah, 5,250 and
And the proposed total square footage with the addition will be?
3,250.
Okay.
So the green spaces, twenty-six by? That back, that back, right now.
Was the demand in that place?
From the rear, I was to the highest, twenty-five feet and fifty.
Yes, sir.
Sure. I just, I see the mathematics of the FAR and I checked it myself and I don't know whether the architect was talking about usable square feet, but gross square feet, I believe, is how.
It's supposed to be up gross, correct?
So my calculations, we have closer to seven point eight as an FAR, point seven, point eight as opposed to six or whatever the application says. And the FAR required in that is point four. So we're almost doubling the FAR of that, of that building in this proposal, so that's it.
What's the square footage of the property? What's the square footage of the house?
In the zoning code, the garage is not counted to what?
Oh, so the current, but no, you wouldn't count the, it counts for, yeah, I thought it, because even if it's underneath the structure, it would still count too. Yeah.
Taking a fifty-two fifty lot and thirty-two fifty house.
But that's, and that thirty-two fifty is without the garage?
Correct.
So it's even, yeah, another six hundred square feet. It's just a massive, massive property. Not a small lot. Go ahead. Any comments?
I'm done.
Yeah, no, way too big. I think that third parking place space is.
Non-existent?
It's non-feasible.
Non-feasible, thank you. Yeah, I don't know how you get the, driving a desk bike, I don't know how you're going to maneuver it around there and then you're parking, end up parking on the grass, taking up more of the, the small, the green. Needs to get much smaller and a little more character than a rectangle.
Looking at your plan, you have a large entertainment space on the top floor and the first floor is, again, rather large. So I think this could be shrunk down without there being, we're not actually give up any veterans. I don't think it's a hardship. You can still have a house that would probably be a bit smaller and satisfy more of the neighbors and the board members.
And you live in the basement too, you know, at the same time. So I mean, I think that's probably why they put the entertainment space up. I just don't know how you, I like, I'm with you, I don't know how you'd ever get a third car. I mean, I don't even know how you're going to get two in the garage. Like, I mean, most of the time people are just like, you're going to put one car in the garage unless there's a storm and then you're going to put two in and you contribute to the problems that we have in Quincy every day.
Correct, and the third car is going to be blocking the car.
Yeah. Mr. O'Brien?
I agree with everybody. I'm real easy to get along with, yeah. That's why I raised a question about the car to begin with. And there are some big houses on the street, but they're further down, a couple of bigger. But this, the lots are bigger, so.
This is a small lot for a very big.
Would you like to?
Yeah, I just give it one second. So yeah, I mean, but I don't even know like what you're going to pare it down. I'm sure you probably looked at other iterations, right? Is that, did you try to make it smaller?
We can make it smaller. This is really up to the, the whole.
Did you want to speak? Did you, did you get sworn in? Okay.
Yeah, so that's my parent over there. I'm actually the daughter, like they own a house.
Okay.
I'm actually the daughter.
Can I just have your name, please?
Jane Lu, who live in one thirty Willow Street.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so they're my parents, they own the house.
Okay.
So right now, they, my little brother and me and my boyfriend both live in like this house.
Okay.
And in the future, like we're gonna still live in this house with like a whole family.
Sure.
And then my, like, my boyfriend, my, like, in the future maybe have like childrens. And then right now, my, like, younger brother is getting bigger. So like, we're thinking about, like, we may need more rooms and then more space.
Yep.
And then I know you'll like, just talk about the garage. Right now, we have like four cars in our house already. And then my parents, my father's car need to park in like the street parking right now.
So you do four cars?
We have four car already right now.
And they're on the driveway now?
Yeah, three car in the driveway and one car is like a, like a street parking right now. So I know that it's like a huge house for you guys, but like for us, we may need that room for the future. That's what we like thinking about right now to have this kind of house. Yeah, so it's like a four room in the second floor. And then we, right now, it's like already need to use three room already. So maybe in the future we have a baby or like when the fam, like when a friend.
Maybe in the future your parents throw you out, you know?
I know, like sometime the Chinese country and.
No, no, I know, I'm just kidding.
Cause I, I, cause my boyfriend's parents, they are back in China.
Yep.
So like.
They might visit and stuff.
Yeah, they visiting and then may, like, what we planning right now, maybe like in the next ten year, we will still live in this house. And then right now it's like a wee wee smaller. Like I have a lot of things, like I have no place to put in right now. And I, I, I like, I'm like, I, I, I don't, I don't want to buy any more thing because I have no space to put them in. You know, because as a like a Chinese family, we usually need a lot of space for storage. That's why we need that, that house. Yeah, and then my mom like to invite her friend to come in to like drink tea, have a chatting in her house. That's why we have like a big living room and then a kitchen and then stuff like that.
Okay.
I think that is like makes sense to us. That's why we're thinking about, yeah, has a like a.
It's just a very big house for a very small lot.
Yeah, I know that.
That's what we look at, you know, we try to keep.
Keep it a little smaller?
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Try and figure out how to pare it down a little.
But like, that's the reason why we think we need that house. But I just like tell you guys about that, yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, I just think, I just think it's just a massive addition on a very small lot in a tight neighborhood already with no parking.
With a lot of parking, a lot of parking needed.
Yeah.
We'll go back to.
If you can just, yeah, if you can figure out, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what you're going to end up, what you're going to have to drop to figure out where to go from there.
Can we continue this?
Yeah, sure. Twenty, say, I mean, what, what was that, the twelve? Can we do the twelve? Is that too much on the document?
Could you pass the adjust the garage?
James, James? Set it back. Set it back and then second floor over here.
Exactly. Twenty-four space. That's not blocking the garage.
Twelve, all right?
I did make that.
Okay.
Want to propose that?
Eleven, twelve.
Yeah, eleven, twelve.
ZB A twenty-four dash fifty-nine, JCBT Architect LLC, variance finding and special permit. FPOD to all existing garages in touch a three-story rear addition to garage on premise number one three zero. Willow Street, make a motion to extend to eleven twenty-two, twenty-four.
No, twelve, eleven, twelve.
Eleven, twelve?
Yeah.
Eleven, twelve.
And if you can just, you know, try and get the plan to us.
One week ahead.
Yeah, at least one week ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least, ZB A twenty-four sixty-five, Stephen Niosi for a variance of finding to rehabilitate and expand the existing structure resulting in fourteen new dwelling units on the premise number twenty-nine dash thirty-one, Newcombe Street in Quincy. The applicant or their representative here? Oh, we got fancy now, huh? You guys come technologically enhanced here, too?
We do our best. Guess it's this big old.
No. Hey, you come prepared, don't you?
All right.
We were saying two hours before the.
Get up, you're dark, all this dark.
For yours, my friend?
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Gordon Glass, attorney with Johnson and Bornstein, Land Use Law Firm located at twelve Chestnut Street in Andover. A little unusual, but I just wanted to kick off this evening by giving Kathleen her flowers. She was extremely helpful throughout the application process and patient, and I hope you guys know how great she is. Really, really appreciate her help. With me tonight is Carlos Sculte, our project engineer, and Tim Johnson, our project architect. We're here representing twenty-one thirty, twenty-nine to thirty-one Newcombe Street LLC. On my original cover letter for the application, I listed the applicant as Stephen Niosi as the property owner. The correct applicant is twenty-nine thirty-one Newcombe Street LLC, which I corrected on an amended letter. I filed a few more last week. Perfect. So it's a preliminary matter. Wanted to point out that this is our property highlighted in green. A portion of the property is located within the twenty-seventeen FEMA flood maps. We've noted section eight point one of the zoning ordinance and just wanted to point that out. Very small amount of work on the project will be done in that area. All right, so why are we here tonight? We're asking for two alternative forms of relief, either a finding from this board or two variances. So the finding would be under section three point four point three of the ordinance. Other than lodging houses and dorms, the only other type of residential structure allowed in the business center district is multifamily housing. What we have on the lot is a two-family home. So it seems that the most comparable type of use that's allowed, because a two-family home is not even allowable by special permit, most comparable use is multifamily housing. So what we're looking at here is a deficiency of lot area and deficiency of frontage. As I've highlighted up there, we've got thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine square feet of lot area where forty-two thousand is required for multifamily use. And we've got a frontage of ninety-nine feet where one hundred feet is required for multifamily use and lot width. We think using the, their variable lot area and frontage standards in the B C district, but we think applying these standards as the standards that apply to the lot, considering the existing structure is a two-family home and the closest use under the bylaw is a multifamily home and two-family homes aren't regulated in the B C district in the first place. We think applying these standards makes sense. This is why we think we qualify for a finding for the expansion of pre-existing non-conforming structure, because we're not creating any new non-conformities. There's no subdivision proposed, lot area is not changing, the frontage isn't changing. So that's why we think we qualify for a finding. I think we also qualify for, you know, if the board disagrees for variances for lot area and for frontage dash lot width based on the exceptional, exceptional narrowness and shallowness of the lot. But really, the, the two things that findings and variances, the thing that they have in common is that for the board to issue either, there has to be a finding that there's no substantial detriment to the neighborhood compared to the current structure. And then you add in with variances, no substantial derogation from the intended purpose of the zoning ordinance. So that's really the element that I want to dig in on here. So as the board is likely aware, Quincy has been designated by the Commonwealth as a gateway municipality. In fact, out of over three hundred and fifty communities in the Commonwealth, only twenty-six qualifies gateway municipalities. And all that really means is it's a mid-sized city where educational attainment is a little bit below average and so is the average household income. There's a parallel kind of structure under the federal government, which are federal opportunity zones. And it's worth noting that the federal government has also identified two large federal opportunity zones in Quincy. So that's kind of the economic condition of the area, you know, and with that backdrop, we can bring ourselves to the property. Now, this is a current picture of the, the structure on the property. It's a somewhat deteriorated two-family home built in the eighteen sixties. The purpose of the project is to rehabilitate that structure and add fourteen new dwelling units for a sixteen-unit multifamily housing structure on the property. So as mentioned before, we're looking at an approximately third of an acre large parcel. Surrounding uses are largely commercial and multifamily. We're here to save the front of the structure and to add to the rear. And a very important piece of information on the site is that it is approximately a quarter of a mile away from the Quincy Center MBTA station. So under the zoning ordinance, there is a clear purpose to try to incentivize and promote housing in close proximity to public transit. And this certainly is in close proximity to public transit. And as we go through this, I'll explain how the project has kind of been tailored with that in mind. So here's a look at a piece of the site plan. I'll step over here for just a moment. In white, you'll see the existing dwelling, the addition is grayed out there at the back of the lot and we're also adding parking droggers on both sides. So we've ravened before planning, have some good wind in our sails. Pleased to say that last month they gave us a site plan approval. And they also granted a special permit. So our original application to this board requested some parking relief. That's no longer necessary because the planning board gave us relief and approved this parking design under section five point one point seventeen of the zoning ordinance. That's sixteen spaces, that's one space per unit. And that parking design is intended, along with certain programs that applicant is going to run at the property and the provision of covered bicycle parking on the property, intended to incentivize a certain type of individual to take up residence at these units, someone who's going to take advantage of public transit, namely. Architectural materials, we do have the architect here who, if the board has questions, can go into more detail in those kinds of things. But the main point is that the materials have been selected to conform with the surrounding site and with the historic architecture. It's just a kind of a rendering of what the new building will look like. You'll see that the somewhat square addition to the rear of the building, that's the addition that's being proposed, whereas you can kind of see the delineation to the existing two-family structure there. So that's what we're proposing. We're also proposing some good local flora surrounding the site to beautify the site and to help shield the use from abutters. So talking about the type of people, we're trying to incentivize to come to these units. These are the type of people that live in Quincy and work in Quincy. They're members of Quincy's workforce. These are relatively small units, studio units, apartment-style living, separate bathrooms. But we're looking for people, I mean, the same type of people who are going to take advantage of public transit that we already know live in this gateway community. So we're looking to provide them modern, nice housing that incentivizes their use of the resources available to them in the municipality. So before I get into the shadow study, I'll just say, those are the elements that we think kind of prove out that this isn't going to be substantially more detrimental than the existing use on the property. In fact, it's going to supply fourteen critically needed new housing units for Quincy's workforce. And it's notable that the planning board in issuing its approvals last month seemed to agree with that assessment. So the other question, if we think about variances and not a finding, is, well, actually, I think I actually have to do a shadow study as well. So the not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. You can see that the shadow study has been done for the equinoxes and for the solstices and there is an extremely minimal amount of shadow spilling off of the property. And that's only being shown during winter time. We also have a photometric plan that shows the emphasis on downward-facing light and light fixtures. They're not projecting any artificial light off the property. So we don't, we believe this, we believe this will be a boon to the neighborhood and to the municipality. And that one remaining question, the variance context, is will it substantially derogate from the purpose or intent of the zoning bylaw? What we're proposing here is to take a non-conforming use and turn it into a conforming use. And we're proposing transit-oriented development quarter of a mile away from a transit station. So we think this is exactly what the bylaw envisions in this district. And we think it'll be good for the neighborhood and for the city. So with that, I think I'll give it a break for a minute, see if any of you have any questions for us and myself and the project team will do our best to answer them. Thanks very much.
What was the total height on the rear building?
The total height?
Yeah.
Thirty feet above grade, I think?
About three stories, thirty feet.
Okay. That's already kind of sitting up on that lot anyways, right? It's already pretty high.
Front sits up.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
No, I don't right now.
No questions.
I have a related question for Rob. Was that the, our repair place beside that, was that supposed to have been redeveloped? I seem to remember us being in there.
I think there were two or three that come proposals for this particular piece. It was larger and then smaller again. It was a really large project at one point, didn't go over well to the neighbors, they shrunk it down.
But it's not, you guys weren't that proposer for that, were you? But one team clearly.
Different team, but.
That was a different team.
Okay. Okay.
Same owner, but different team.
Okay. So at one time it was all one, no, it's back. I'm pretty sure it was two parcels.
Yeah.
It was a much bigger building. They, they, with the flood plain issues with the underground park, and there were a lot of issues with it.
Right, yeah.
It easily would be done so they could.
Plus, I mean, the neighbors up there were stren- uh strenuously objective of anything going anywhere. That was a, that was a very tight.
It was a big project that that happened.
It was, it was a big fight, too.
Yeah, with mass.
Yeah. Okay, alright, um, thank you.
Want to, you have anything else to add, or did you get?
No, there's no questions.
No, I mean, there's things, I happen to be at the planning board that night we were there and, not for yours, but Board Member Sean was talking as in, I saw it coming up, I never really kind of got the end. How the heck are you gonna keep all of your building employees off of all public parking, which is right there? I mean, the natural answer is make a deal with the Y somehow. And I don't know what they do or do, you can't put construction equipment there, but free the workers. Otherwise, the codding and everything is just gonna be jammed up with workers. Right now, there's no meters on it. I don't think there's a limit on how long you can park there either, so.
Oh.
Concern for the people in the area and is it directly related to the zoning questions? I'm generally, but that was sort of, I never heard it answered the question. It was something I've heard since then, people talking about it, so I figured I would have the question here. I think you got.
So you got.
I can maybe speak to that.
Okay.
So, for record, Carlos, with Civil and Patrol Consultants, we're civil engineers on the project. We're involved in the planning board process as well. Uh, one of the things we talked about there is part of the construction management plan that gets submitted when you submit the building permit application. It was discussed that uh there would be uh elements incorporated into that construction management plan that identified that construction workers uh, you know, two or three spaces on the site that weren't reserved for staging, could be used for the people coming that day. And there would be very specific guidance to coming in, dropping off your materials in the morning, and then you have to leave. There's no on-street parking on Newcombe, so you can't park there. So they would have to find parking in publicly available spaces and essentially walk back to the site after they dropped their, their materials.
I heard that, I found it to be wholly unrealistic, because who the hell the heck is gonna be managing and.
Go talk to Stop and Shop.
Stop and.
Let's talk to a Y or Stop and Shop.
Yeah.
In front parking.
Stop and Shop.
Yeah, and they might be able to lease parking. It's just somewhat, we, we understand and the owner understands that there's no parking available on Newcombe and the public parking on adjacent streets are gonna fill up, right? So it's not gonna be available and the contractors are gonna know that ahead of time. Uh, so they're not just gonna be circling the block looking for parking. There, that's going to be incorporated in the construction management plan. Yeah, you know, can't say that I, you know, I don't, what I'm looking for is space, it's just what happens. But if you're coming there every day, you're, you're gonna kind of find what works for you in that sense, and it's gonna be.
My office is around the corner. I can tell you the city does a pretty decent job of ticketing down there, cause I've gotten my half my fair share.
Usually.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I know that's.
Uh, no, I'm good, thanks.
Any more to present, or any, did we, architect, or do we wanna hear?
There's anything.
Architectial design? No, I'm good.
Thank you also.
Okay. Um, can I have a seat?
Okay.
If uh anyone wants to speak in favor, first call, second call, third call closed. Do we got a good list, or?
Yeah, I'm just a supporting letter from um.
The counselor.
The counselor.
I'll read that in first. Uh, supporting letter from Council McCarthy. I support the planned fourteen units on Newcombe Street as the footprint over the last four years has decreased dramatically. They still have the following concerns, as Newcombe's a narrow street and always has, is going to have a water issue with its proximity to the town Brook on McGrath. D P W one, D P W is required to look at Newcombe again to see if any improvements can be made to water flow in the area. Two, all parking period for the units is contained at times in the parking lot, no street or sidewalk parking. Three, any abutters that have asked for fencing or other adjustments to the abutting property be reasonably considered by Mr. Niosi. Thanks to all involved in this project, of the area. As the area is an area of future change and growth. And then uh, just from the civil engineer, we've reviewed and provided comments for this project to the planning board. All comments we provided have been addressed properly. We don't need any other further comments from the Z B A at this time. Opposed or undecided? First call, second call.
Hi, my name is Kevin Christian. I live at twenty Granville Street. Um, I'm a direct abutter to this proposed project. Um, just kind of undecided. I'm really just concerned about the density of the project. I mean, as I said, it's um I'm a direct abutter. It's gonna be over thirty feet tall and next to my property. Um, there is a lot of development in the area, projects going on. They're all at the end of the block. I mean, this proposal is right in the middle of um, of, 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 of the city block and as I said, I'm just um concerned about the density.
What was your address again?
Twenty Granville, G R A N V I L L E.
Is that a single-family home?
It's a two-family home.
And you're directly behind it, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call? Third call? Call that part of the hearing closed? I mean.
Did I have a chance to respond to the abutters concern?
Yeah, sure.
Just want to point out that the uh, you know, while there is this kind of dual law area system where there's base law area for multifamily housing that we don't comply with, the other law area requirement is five hundred square feet per dwelling unit. And that's kind of speaks to the density that the municipality thinks is reasonable within the zoning district. And uh, under that system, we could have up to twenty-seven dwelling units, where we're proposing sixteen. So we have, and as noted before, this used to be a much larger project. So we have done a lot of work to, to provide critically needed housing units, but to not to put up some overblown monster of a project on the street.
Obviously trying to, you were trying to keep some scope of the front, right? Is that why you kept the
Yeah.
Oh, you're keeping the older dwelling out front, or is it as part of the project, or was there a, it was a part of the reasoning as to scope of the neighborhood or existing structure?
I think best for an architect.
Yes, the uh, the existing house built around eighteen sixty, I believe.
In eighteen sixty?
Eighteen sixty, so a federal uh, so we want to bring that back to its original federal style. And then the uh addition in the rear, um, using the mansard roof as the expression in the gable in the front, so we felt that was a a good uh fit between the two roof expressions, but yes, um keeping the addition to the rear, we've been, we've talked to the abutter in the rear. Uh, that's why we generated the shadow studies, so even though it is in the rear, the sha- predominant shadows will be off our abutter, the direct abutters property. And we're also providing a six-foot high stockade fence between the rear of the property and the abutting property.
Yeah, the trees right alongside that fence, right?
We do, yeah.
Uh, so we. See, and I just.
Yeah.
So the fence is supplemented with additional trees.
I'm just remembering.
Additional trees at the rear?
Yeah, in front of the, the stockade.
There you go.
Yeah, so uh I believe the abutters uh page north uh behind the property, right? So there's an existing stockade fence there. Uh, and then we supplemented with additional evergreen trees there to provide, you know, additional height and buffering above that fence.
Is that you?
Yes, it is.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, the stockade fence uh is, is in very poor shape. It's probably thirty years old. Definitely needs to be replaced.
Okay. Will you be replacing the fence?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, we're replacing the stockade, providing the screen and all the stuff.
The one, speaking of the old fence is coming down and you're putting us.
In the rear, that's correct.
In the rear, where the sides are all.
What is it, they're probably, how far in the sides, Carlos?
Uh, so on the left-hand side of the page, there's a fence that's in pretty good shape on that side. Uh, so we're keeping that fence. It's an all-new fence down the right side. Uh, and then across the back as well. Uh, originally we weren't proposing, but I understand, uh, speaking with the owner, he's amenable to replacing that stockade fence that isn't in great shape. So it would be an all-new fence along the back edge as well.
It's gonna be the same material as what's on the side.
What's on, yeah, what do you, what do you, did you discuss what you're replacing, what type of fence?
Uh, I believe down the right-hand side, we have uh essentially like a, a visibility fence. Traditionally, it's a white vinyl type fence. Uh, and then along the back, uh, that's what we would propose. We're happy to work with them on what that material is, whether it's, you know, a picket-type wooden fence or a vinyl fence.
Yeah. Thank you.
Did you hear that?
You're good?
Yes.
I mean, they yeah, I mean, the other alternative, but the only other alternative, if you hit on that building in the front of any of this massive structure. You know, I mean, I think they've, they've worked out to try and figure out something, cause this has been years in the making and you think about the neighborhood and eventually.
No, and it, it, it is a lot smaller than what was here previously with the two-story underground.
It was four stories with the two stories underground, yeah, it was massive. Um.
No, I like the fact that they're keeping the older building, bringing that to some type of modern form of the older building and, you know, there's a left, there's there were at least one charging station. I think there was some discussion that there might be more, it's, you know, the cover, checks a lot of the boxes for what they're looking for, for.
We're gonna start going to planning, they're giving us a lot more.
I get tech, I learned it. I'm actually surprised. I thought I was gonna get the same I budgeted like four hours, cause I figured it's gonna get all the same people, but it kind of worked itself out to planning and it come that way. So, um, yeah, it was interesting, certainly a great start.
Any other comments?
You know, um Quirk just closed their Hyundai dealership right across just down the road. They moved it to Braintree, that's a big open space. They, they want to talk to Dan Quirk about putting some of your workers down there. Get them off the street.
Sure, he'll be developing that soon. Um.
The other thing is, there's a construction project now on that McGrath.
Spear, yeah.
Spear?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know where they're packing, but.
There's gonna be one going on behind the line.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Um. He'll take the tea. What, do we, do we vote on both of these? Uh, as a kind of some discrepancy, or do we choose, or you choose, like, or is it on finding and?
It's a finding, but yeah, you won't.
But you had some disagreements with that. You felt like it could be done either with a finding or is it just do it all at once?
Yeah, that would be my opinion. I mean, I, I felt like I was eligible for uh both forms of relief, so I want to give the board its options.
Sure. And what the options, does it matter if we choose one or the other, or?
It's the one we're right, cause the last.
Cause it's all hot size?
Okay.
Yeah. You guys get to vote?
Yep.
Yep. Z B A twenty-four sixty-five, Stephen Niosi for a variance, finding to rehabilitate and expand the existing structure resulting in fourteen new dwelling units on the premise number twenty-nine thirty-one Newcombe Street Quincy. I make a motion to grant the variance subject to fencing in the back.
One thing, change the name.
Oh, sorry, yeah, 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 yeah. What's that full, complete name? Sorry.
Twenty-nine thirty-one.
Twenty-nine thirty-one Newcombe Street LLC for a variance, finding to rehabilitate and expand the existing structure resulting in fourteen new dwelling units on the premise number twenty-nine dash thirty-one Newcombe Street Quincy. I make a motion to grant the variance.
Exactly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Some move.
Look, guys. Alright, thanks very much for your time.
Motion to adjourn?
Before you all leave.
Signatures.
Signatures.
Huh?
There are two.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
And I don't have to chase anybody.